...that he had the budget based on the resolution that Mr. Pitts provided for us to do this type of matter. I have listed to transfer sixty-three hundred dollars. Sixty-three hundred dollars, that's the only thing that was in the budget that would cover the partial payment that we owe him for the month of September. We would still have to come back to the board to add for a way to up or other paper October because it's not budgeted. The appropriation is not budgeted, um, this year to cover his October payment and to cover what was owed him from September. So if we're going to be doing these kind of transfers, this is the document the Attorney Pitts created for us to do that. The first one I have is for sixty-three hundred dollars to be transferred from the general fund to disposal. Um, this was before I learned that June and Thursday four had come up with a different amount. So we can change these numbers in this, in this, in this resolution as the board says. It's also going to get the street lighting. In the budget that I found, there was only eighty-six hundred dollars budgeted as a appropriation from the general fund to street lighting. We asked to owe him to keep fifteen thousand dollars. I heard you say trustee partner two are paying for the partial payment. So it's up to the board whether we want to approve this resolution and what amount I'm saying we can change to.
Okay, uh, trust me, Ford, you, um, kind of have the disposal. And so you have a number for that. And since we were in a partial payment, what, 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 five thousand dollars for the street lighting? And to give the, uh, anticipated money?
Okay, the first resolution is forward now on the papers listed. We owe five hundred forward twenty-six thirty-five oh six for September. Is that the amount that you all want in the resolution?
Is that what you said?
Because we can change this to twenty-six thirty-five oh six. So that will pay him in the board's new retention. I'll transfer the funds from the general fund to disposal. And we can pay him the dollars that we owe him from September. And you all when you do it, we're going to do October, October. Uh, I know we had a got to the time to vote on the street lighting, but the street lighting, it was eighty-six hundred. Now, based on the papers listed, we asked to owe you know, like fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, one sixty-five oh nine. I think I heard someone say that we were going to make a payment right, we were going to draw some of the dollar amount for this one payment.
No, we, we had, um, so we could get the money for the wire, but we were set for five thousand dollars.
So we want to change this number in this resolution to five thousand dollars. And we would pay the street lighting five thousand one fourteen thousand. This is something that you all contacted before.
But I just said that I'd be very, very.
That amount is owed us fourteen thousand one sixty-five oh six, this number payable. So we change the resolution to transfer five thousand dollars from general fund to street lighting, and that's the number we pay. So that is the thing I don't know about each other too. The resolutions that we need to have to.
And if they tell us how much, then we will be required to enter our payment plan for the rights to fight. Even if you offer five thousand dollars, you come into payment plan.
Well, our, our cost needs to.
Okay.
So if this is by the cost of the, they say within the set, if less than five, then less all. The five thousand dollars will already be transferred.
Okay. Then they'll tell them the next payment under the payment plan, right?
Well, we don't need to know what we're giving this party.
I didn't, that's why I asked, I think it's like a regular, although I'm ready to have.
Then, uh, I'll talk to, I'll talk.
Okay.
So if they tell her to add, they will not be anticipating any of the street should come up for more than the last on the reverse basis, number of papers, you can't even anticipate eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
Ford. So here on item A T. B. So through this proof resolution, transfer, uh, funds to the general fund, fund of the general fund to disposal in the month of in the month of, five thousand dollars. Oh, that's, that's, that's. Uh, for the stroke, we can do twenty-six. What we can't hold, yes.
The first couple of.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six. Twenty-six, six thirty-five. Yeah, two thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars. Ford. No, I can't get that to spread. I have, I have a motion to approve or disapprove resolution to transfer two thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars sixty from general fund to disposal. Excuse me, I think we had a resolution, what did you say? I approve those.
Approve them.
Two thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars sixty-six.
In the amount two thousand, I mean, two thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars.
This bit will get supported. All in favor? Any opposed? Hold it here. Item, uh, A T. That trick. A T is a resolution to transfer funds from general fund to disposal based on Mr. Trustee Harris' decision, five thousand dollars. General fund to street lighting.
Ford.
Yes.
Right, the floor?
Yes.
So you're, yes.
Can I say something about, uh, item A T? Because, uh, that's part of the, uh, these common, common. That common.
Motion here. Ford.
Yes.
Senator?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Our. We have motion here. Item that, first. Approve or disapprove, um, payroll for October this twenty-second. In the amount thirteen thousand two hundred seventy-seven thousand forty-two cents. And this, um, this is, the figures are not, have an animal shows how things that. I can't see. You have two hundred and now, which one, page two thirty? What was it? Okay. That's, um, okay. Then you go to two seven, two hundred seventy-seven thousand point two cents. And yet, add to that amount, it's in the original, just two hundred dollars, two hundred and four dollars.
Okay, two hundred, okay.
So it's at thirteen, two seven, that's already two seven, seven, okay.
But we both agree, two three.
Oh.
The amount of that, two seven, four.
All in favor? I have a motion here. Approve or disapprove, in the month of, no, that's, two thousand. Four thousand. A hundred, twenty thousand. The amount is in five hundred nine thousand, grand, fifty-one dollars. That will be done for the paper. I think two hundred and fifty, the amount of five hundred nine thousand dollars ninety-one, nine cents, based on the paper you have.
But for the range.
So when you change this, change this, you change it together. That would be paid from this one, that.
When I turn out my mind, when I want to know that, it gives you a warranty or a back home.
Yeah. For, I agree with this. I mean, I can't, I'll say which one, I don't, I don't believe that one, I don't. This is something that I have to.
I don't have to tell you. There's a new procedure.
The working people, um, working down, but if you get a full, what, so if you look at the bank account, you can look at people actually living in the house for the month of November.
You know, right, that's because you want that for more, but you.
Right, uh, sorry, all right. Okay, but I haven't seen it.
Right.
Done. Now, I'm gonna do a, 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 five thousand, but I'm just.
I mean, I have so many papers, unless, unless we have a place to pay for the.
True.
We're gonna make three thousand dollars.
Sir.
So can you, can you make, make a note? I don't know. Can you, please, take, um, this to a, to a, ask, uh, five hundred nine thousand dollars, five hundred nine thousand nine hundred and nine cents, based on the paper you have.
That's a court resolution. And then I'll see how it's about to be.
All in favor? I have a motion here. Approve or disapprove, the purpose of office, we have to act up for all the counts paid. I think they, they put the, uh, first off, the contact has to be all paid.
Sir.
I have a question. Uh, well, for me, this, this is a welcome motion because I receive quite a few calls from vendors who have to pay for, you know, have questions, you have to pay.
We can't hear you.
I said, for me, this is a welcome motion because I receive quite a few calls from vendors. Um, they have to pay, and often there are people who don't want to work. So I just forward those calls to the clerk. And if they are your contributors, I will forward them to the court of justice. And can you also send the vendor's letter indicating they should contact the law?
I would, uh, like to make a request to the purpose officer, since we are on this issue that we have, um, elevation with partial payments are sent out, that we never descend on the voter. Explain that it is partial payment and, uh, that wait for, you know, payments come. Because, uh, they're saving their future, they're small, uh, within sixty days. They don't have to exactly, you know, some type of, sometimes it's small. And, uh, and, uh, you know, so that they would have some type of, they are called, this way. But would they call me, would they receive partial payment, you know? Anytime if I receive partial payment, um, they should have some type of, that they.
All in favor? I have a motion here. Approve or disapprove, moving from the, I'm certain, I'm certain, I'm certain, the hall thousand and five, we need to be a fact of the bill. The mill, so that we can have the trustees, um, who can see what being spread for, um, this right. Have you seen it?
Who has the.
Every office has a motion.
I know, I, but I, I don't even read the. So, so, so what if we propose? And that we have any, we can buy, um, the same, um, and put it in the copy room so that we can put all the information there that is sealed to the top of the.
Has a cost, that's one.
So, well, this is, uh, we're gonna come up with a protocol, straight, all that, and it's all that.
Yes.
And you're gonna come up with that protocol.
So you will receive all that. I have a shred, one single thing, I'm gonna draw on our face, and I have anything, I have box, I, I feel I shred any time the document. But, um, so you're going to have this box, everybody who wants something shredded, it will be put to this box. And it will be put to this box, and then once the box is full, what will happen to the documents? We will have shredded, shredded out.
And how much would that cost?
I think for, uh, in my opinion, you know, it's, it's.
Now, what is one of them?
The discussion is for the box.
It's for the box, which is a forty-two gallon box.
And so, stay every month, or stay maybe every month, two months, we, we would have to know the cost.
If I'm not staying, if you get a shred, a couple of shreds, don't think about doing a box. And that's the thing, because dealing with the other one, that I have seen a lot of, that's what they do.
I'm coming to you on charge. Because I know, um.
If they just become, they're having on the key where they just kind of, they take it out, take it right from the truck outside, shred it like.
Some of you have the shredding device right on the truck, they, they shred it right on your side. So I'll say this, yes, and that you have, uh, because.
And we have a protocol, we've got a protocol.
Can I ask, what's the, what is the purpose? If, if it's not costing the people to shred right now, what's the purpose of occurring a cost to shred? If it's, if it's not, what, that's what I'm.
Well, we need to know what documents are being shredded.
So that's, that's what I'm asking you. That box is not a steel box.
No, this one, well, because I'm gonna tangle this, and we're gonna fire it, steal.
So you will know.
Right.
You will, who will, who will?
I will also, um, give the back to, um, the, to, to that, to.
To see what's being shredded?
The, to see the box, what, the, the, how much is on, how much.
But what I'm, now, what I'm trying to find out, this is what I'm trying to find out. What's the purpose, what, the, and what, what is the purpose?
Because usually they're steel containers, you.
Right.
But we would drop our, our documents in the steel container. Are you seeing, what you would do is you would hold the container up and make sure that you're not shredding that yet.
Yeah.
So you want to see every document that's been shredded. What's the purpose of that?
I'm checking.
So.
Can you do that along with one or two trustees?
And also, I would like to be equipped, and I would like to see exactly what's being shredded right now. Because I'm, I just, you know, it hasn't been a lot of shredding in the past. Uh, and I don't think all of the, all of the shreds coming up, I, I, I don't, I guess I've not shredded anything.
Well, you know, usually people don't shred, they just take the information that they want. They don't shred, they just take what they want.
I think all township documents, of course, I think that, no.
For some of them, you have to make, you do payroll, you do social security numbers come on there, you don't want to throw it in the garbage, you want to actually put them in the shredder so nobody else can just put personal information, so. Um, you can just, yeah, I'll say, because I'm a back.
I'm going to say E and E. All in favor?
All right.
I have a motion here. Most secure.
Uh, update on issue of certain resolution. Uh, we had a resolution on June the thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, it was moved by Harley, second by Gregory, to approve the agreement contingent on minutes from the parts of RAC. Uh, I have not received any bids to that, so, um, I didn't sign the resolution, I wanted to inform the board of that.
For the resolution, please.
The resolution is, um, related to, um, Michael working with the parts of RAC.
Uh. His, um, his appearance, to tell us, um.
I mean, you, you, you're going back to, I know that had to be at least made, uh, when that resolution was done. And when it was done, I mean, previously, they started to cut the grass of the recreation center apart. Knows approved, you know, in minutes. What I'll do, I'll just follow up, backtrack to the minutes, and make sure that we get a copy of those minutes over to you, because it was, it was definitely, uh, being there, Mr. Collins, he, he's secretary, so he was one who actually, he made references at the minutes. Anyway, we'll follow what you want.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, uh, to all the partners, uh, who are being here, uh, Mr. Redd, Mr. Redd, Mr. Collins.
A resolution of the general fund on June the seventh, regarding the laws between council and charter township of Roarlock. This resolution attention of State of Michigan by the supervisor, and I form sure that I do not be signing this unless a necessary change can be made. Which was in the second paragraph, whereas the general fund seeks to secure revenue anticipated notes of approximately two hundred thousand dollars in emergency refund approximately two hundred and twenty thousand, which would be possibly used to loan funds to the police department in about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. It should have been changed to three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And the forty thousand dollars should have been changed to thirty-seven thousand dollars respectively. These loans are additional to the support already reflected on the two thousand and thirteen operating budget as the millions advantage due in fact.
And that, this is the beginning where, um, you know, funny game, gave up a destination for him, and he had it in certain month. And even during presentation, he knows that there was an error, and he was supposed to change the dollar amount. And those dollar amounts were supposed to also be changed in the resolution. Are you saying, clerk, that the dollar amount would not change the resolution?
No, it was for the test, say.
That was Jim what?
Jim Sacks. A resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the police fund of the charter township of Roarlock. I need one minute, minutes about my minutes, please. Which date this resolution adopted? I researched it and did not find in the minutes, and this, uh, resolution was not adopted by the, uh, board of trustees.
A resolution.
It says to transfer funds from the general fund to the police fund from the charter township of Roarlock. It had a black dollar amount of dollars, and that was a dollar, dollar.
I remember being presented, but for some reason, it was not passed. But, Mr. Moore, you would have, you would have, you went through all the minutes, and you didn't see anything where that regulation came up?
I, I saw where it came up on the agenda, but we didn't see some of it happening, it was not worked.
Okay, so you started, you know, today. Could you give her the day?
Right, well, she, well, she moved forward, she moved forward, she said, I, 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 I took it.
I took the minutes, every minute I put, not only on my computer upstairs, but I put it on my.
A resolution in order for me to call, in order for the charter township of Roarlock, for addition from section sixteen three, state law in for me, the, um, article one in chapter fifteen, meant to make reflection made off state law, Mr. Redd, for him in the township of Punch, by local court. This resolution was not adopted by the board. Uh, this item was published on September the twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, and I would never walk back to the board of trustees, having discussed with Dodge. And the minutes are off the page, two thousand and thirteen, off the, in fact, on September the twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, it is still not walked back to the board of trustees.
And I heard you, uh, reading from some sheet you have there prepared, is it possible to communicate, I think, written in form to consulate to each member of the board?
Or have the document things sort of up there?
Yes, I'm asking if it's possible to also communicate them right now, so that we all have the same document that can understand, of course.
Heading down to, um, I'll take trustees.
Uh, this is who, this is who trustees switch offices, they were cutting out. Um, it was up on the last, uh, agenda when I was present at the last meeting. Uh, me and trustee, trustee Owens had talked about it before anyway. And I found myself up here a lot, like, today at that office. It was just pretty small, and the rest of the contractors and employees, there's everyone, trustees there. And he has more suitable space than I would care, and I was just going to go.
I'm, I'm a trustee and I, right. I don't think that we should make that change, okay? Uh, I think that, but they all know spaces, should be, it is sufficient, I'm not.
Can I, uh, I might.
And as a trustee, trustee, by time.
You come up here, you just take the space that you see is insufficient.
See, and one time, we did have two, uh, one incomplete room. We had one within, we were moved. And at that time, um, you must come up here every day, you come up here every day?
I'm up here about a day, it's a week.
Okay. And you're talking about the one they sit down behind, uh, the secretary, secretary chair. Where the one that you deny access to?
Like you said, you come up there and you collect that.
No, I don't come here like everything, no, I don't.
How many do you have?
Don't have one, I have, I don't have any conversation, I, since you live online.
All right, well, you know, I'm up here.
And what I'm saying is sufficient, and that's all I do as a trustee.
All right, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, now, like, when me and Mr. Ford was up here today, we did most of our meeting in the hallway. Because we wouldn't want to that, but it's only one little desk about the side that you're nothing up to at all.
You didn't go into this office and?
We did afterwards. She was in a meeting that person that wasn't, um, wasn't available at that time. Yes, but why should we do that if we have sufficient enough room where it's at now?
But shouldn't that be done when we check the conference room and the prison room first?
I'm talking about all trustees, it's any business that we need to.
That's what I'm saying, not my personal opinion, okay?
I'm staying.
I don't see all that.
Okay, let me know.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay, um, we have an auditorium. And I spoke to, uh, e- even if it's gonna be Mr. Robeson or whoever, I spoke to him before when, uh, he was going to contact with us. When I see Jones did not get our information in. And, um, I guess because we were so, just the way I see Jones operates and we're just taking information away. He said, that is virtually almost a leak. You are not supposed to take the documents away from the township. Uh, he said, whenever, with our other auditor we get, whether it's him or another auditor, the information is supposed to be in the township. He said, I will need an office. He said, and it, it has to be a locked office. He did say that. At that time, I said, well, maybe we could share office with Mr. Cunningham. It has a lock on it. He said, due to the fact that he's your financial analyst, I'm an auditor, he said, that will be sufficient. So we will be having to approve an auditor real soon because it's coming to that time of year. Now, they're going to need an office that has to be locked because there will be documents that I, I don't think you would want Mr., uh, Jim Wright in there. Coenforce went off in there, a lot of times you have, uh, uh, the security guard lazy throws in there. So you're gonna have to be very careful with what you, where you put your audit. Now, that, that, I'm just, I'm just saying, so that's something to think about, which is gonna happen in the near future.
Usually auditors are not here, I, I used to be an auditor. They're not gonna be here all year.
No, not all year, but he said it'd be a couple of months, he did say that.
It should be, uh, uh, auditors, the county should take, shouldn't take any more than six to eight weeks. So maybe if you all are switching offices during the time when the auditors are here, then you use the office space. But at least ten months I would be here, you and Mr. Ford would be able to utilize the space that you asked for.
And, uh, trustee Owens, you know, he, 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 he talked about it also too, so.
So I move that we approve, um, the trustees to switch offices, we're going to have. It's been moved and supported.
Or, well, first of all, let, let's just, uh, first of all, we can't really react on this audit that was taken.
Yeah.
It was taken. So we cannot, we can't, all this, like, it's not removed from the table, we sit up to make the most discussion, it's, it was taken. Y'all just read the minutes in there, I read my minutes from last morning, y'all take this item, this deal taken.
We can admit, we can admit the motion.
Item is taken.
We can admit that motion to do that, just try, you just change the dollar on the motion of the book. Same thing.
You have to read, sort of, how to motion, okay? So we just like it those.
I know.
And I would respect it, trustee, uh, Horn was here, uh, trying to make sure that he, I would put on this call. Because then I think you have a trusty honor made close to take.
Because we, I, I actually, I move that we bring back the table. But I can, the present.
This page, I told you, uh, higher page. I move that we, we move to take higher page for our seven minutes. And we approve the trustees to switch offices, we're going to have.
That's why, basically, man, I mean, I know we spoke to you on R and T's.
I think it's weird.
We spoke to you on R and T, correct? And, but I did on my, I mean, I'm not a car, but if you see him, he could, he could do it right now. So based on that, I mean, I believe we, we were, uh, where are all four trustees going to sit down in that one office, where we're here?
Can't have all four trustees to sit down.
Well, we are creating that one office, so we're here. This one of the best place in the world. He has a tiny office, he's only here, what, twenty-eight hours a month?
He needs a contract.
And he's a contractor. I just don't understand the problem.
Do we have to talk for motion?
Of course. Well, promotion.
It's going to take.
Okay, I got, I got, first, we're going to take.
It's a joint, it's a joint.
It has to be a joint, it has to be a joint, that's what it is. It has to be a joint.
Move and approve.
That's right.
You want the documents, because we had to get them from the.
One, no. Two, no. Three, yes. Four, yes. Thank you, yes, most of you. I don't.
Um, I have another B. is upgrading, uh, our computer system. Talking to, uh, Deputy Treasurer and Deputy Planner, they say our system is very outdated. Uh, with what we have as far as our, uh, I know we don't have any funds available now, but I was actually discussing what we are planning on doing with it. And just the security system, they had approved the computer system more. Okay, well, just the computer system, uh, everybody can start to call and let them operate on the computer system.
I, I have a problem with, uh, my computers. So I didn't know, I didn't know that it was a problem.
I was, uh, Deputy Treasurer was on the group trying to pull up that security system, and I've got problems, and all going with it.
Computers, one of all these computers, um, two guys, you have a computer?
No.
Okay, that's what she would have problem, computers.
And computers.
That because, because when I first came, they had two, one family, that just don't own it. But there was so much with the computers up there, there was a computer that was taken. Uh, there was some computers that were removed. Um, that's part of the problem, that so much, like, my computers is poor results. Um, you know, computers, the, the lack of computers, you know, to be.
Right, so.
Um, but, you know, right now, we have to work, what we have is, we can do something, like, now.
I was just answering, it's not available.
We don't have.
Um, we're just discussing now, because it's something that really needs to be done, we're gonna try. But we know we have to come up to a time.
But I'm just saying, when the funds are available, it's not, I'm asking that the wrong way, but right now, we're, you know, there, you know, crucial. Naturally, that, it should always be a purpose.
It's something you probably need to look at, I mean, you know, because when a fund's. Well, today is trying to access a lateral account system, and we're trying to access a person's filing tax records in case of very long time. So for the offices where you have to connect with outside internet sources, so you need to have a computer that's at, well, for now, she's at.
Uh, thanks, I know this is a discussion, but as we were going through the, the, um, I have received to approve and disapprove. We withdrawing and or cancellation of rednecks, court action against James Green and Kirk. And our final approval of the board of trustees, Tony Pintuck, is directed to file the required new documents of need.
I hope that we approved, drawn, and canceled the rednecks, court action against James Green and Kirk. And a final approval by the board of trustees and Tony Pintuck is permitted to file the required new documents of need.
I have a question, Tony Pintuck, um, what exactly is the lawsuit going now? I mean, you know, what would be the in outcome, what is the, uh, account was playing about?
Currently in discovery phase. Trying to determine exactly what facts occurred, didn't occur. All the parties to, is that testimony in connection with that?
After all, I said, there's no real outcome, I don't know, like, what's the winning outcome for the board? Or, you know, I mean, you know, what is the in outcome exactly? Because I'm still kind of confused on that part.
Yeah, the lawsuit is a suit to, uh, ensure that the clerk at this point continues to comply with the order of the court, which requires her to perform her clear discretion or in non-discretionary functions. The ongoing litigation is intended to, first of all, identify those functions which she believes she is not obligated to perform and understand the legal basis of it. Bring clarity so that this board doesn't continue to have the clerk make, uh, legal arguments that excuse or justify her failure refusal to do something. Let a judge make the final decision as to whether her defenses are lawfully grounded or they are not. Hopefully, at the end of the day, this board will have clarity as well as the plaintiff as to what the obligations are, are not, as a matter of law, and whether her offenses she's asserted are not lawfully grounded.
Probably, if one of them don't have clarity.
Um, I thought I had clarity because I was a little bit understanding that it was, there were two things that. It was resolution that we had for her to do that she didn't comply with. But the resolution was, you know, I don't have really clarity on that because, for one, when, when the resolution came up or question came up for, about supervisor to receive access to fund dollars. When she first asked for it, it was for white purposes, then, uh, the lawsuit, she wants to be the only now. And since she asked that now, you know, why are you still going forward with the lawsuit? Also, in another words, for her to get, real cutting out, stuff in the time domain, which I still understand, because she works well. And she's supposed to tell the protocol with him, and he has to do what she say, not he say. So that's what I don't have clarity on, so. If there's, if there's something else to the lawsuit now, you know, right here now.
Say stuff from a backup, uh, to the board. This lawsuit was brought about, I think, uh, since Mrs. Waters, Mrs. Waters, do you remember? Um, that day, that, I, I mean, this is what became very detrimental to us. We had to get this information to the state by five o'clock. And the day before, Mrs. Waters, I remember, uh, they give, everybody in the audience asked us, was every morning, gonna be here? Was it gonna happen at a certain time? Every morning, we said, yes, I'm gonna be here inside high college, what is that day? And the job that I did in that, I don't know what exactly going on. Um, it was imperative, it was only three people that believed it to be here, and that was Mr. Cunningham. I know he finished his contract, but he was very important because he is, and, and you can see how important it is because of what happened. Um, the twenty-third was yesterday, I'm just, I'm not about that. But he was the only one they said they believed it to be here. That's how important the numbers ban is to any of you, your financial analysts or even your, uh, city banks. So that day, when we were here, and I thought this is how this lawsuit all came about. When we came in here, we came to do our jobs, and it was time for the clerk to work with Mr. Cunningham. He went to her, and I'm, 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 it's only us three here, and asked her, are you ready? And she said, I'm going to do my statutory duties first. Okay, now, we had a timeframe, and we sent in incomplete documents that did not help us. Now, I mean, I thought that maybe this is the reason why this board came about this lawsuit, to, to, to have a judge make better being. Because if we are, if every timeframe that we had, we couldn't get cooperation. I'm here, I'm up, you say we're in three next week, I'm up here four, sometimes five, and sometimes on Saturday, I'm up here six. So I know and I see what's going on. And as people have said, you all were friends before you became, yes, we were, before you, I thought we were friends. You sat in my private office, we were friends, we were friends, we did business together.
That's personal.
Excuse, I know, listen, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just keeping it real, okay? You mad at me now, now you don't want to be my friend in the past. Okay? But that's okay, because I, you know, we were, we were all okay. And, and I'm gonna be real honest, I didn't want to do that, but I'm here as a supervisor. I'm here not for one person, not for friendship, not for family. I'm here for seventy-nine percent of this community that voted for me, and I don't want to disappoint anyone. So, 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 so because, how do we know that Mrs. Green, once this lawsuit, the, the judge drops, and she's not gonna go back to saying, well, I don't, it's not my duty or something? Let the judge, let the judge determine. Sometimes, you see, I'm being honest with you. Sometimes you act right when it's somebody over you, but when you know, she know, judge, know that happens. Mrs. Waters, you know that happens, I apologize, I can hear the hurt in your voice when I told you I said. When I told you, I said, I'm so, you heard it in my voice. I said, it's what, I said, she said she did not let do it, she gonna do her statutory duties first. You were right, you heard it in my voice. I didn't know what else to do. I had to turn around, call our secretary. She said, get it in anyway, even though it's not complete, get it in anyway. And that's when I told each of their, I told each of their board members, and I thought this was what the law was saying.
She was watching on YouTube, it was on YouTube.
Yeah, excuse me, you were here, okay, okay, at three o'clock. And I'm going, no, no, let me excuse you, please, she there for her.
I know you're on.
Paying a racketation about us going up to our end now. You was outside just, just racketating about that. And I mean, and this was just, I'm up here, she's on her, you racketating, I'm trying to do this day alive. I mean, that's, that's a terrible day.
I have, uh.
Should've been a terrible day for all of us.
Um, you only represent seventy-nine percent of the township. But, uh, before, uh, before, before we got to that point, uh, there was situations that were brought to us, which would be directly need, uh, Bill Cunningham not doing his job because of the trustees, which I was present talking with them at the time, had had to give him a record that he had got things done at the time, he more, uh, processed to do. Hurt, um, to do his job and she asked him to do, he agreed to it. And then I think about people later, he came up here and flipped the script and act like we never even had that conversation. Um, me and trustee Owens and Mr. Owens had, uh, came up and said in the meeting that in order to get paid, he would have to have stuff ready, after we get another month insurance and that. That would have happened, he would have had his job in, at purpose anyway. And the lawsuit didn't come because of that one incident, because it was tragedy brought before us before then. When you wanted right only, I mean, when you wanted right access to funds out.
Me, I never wanted right, I never asked for right. I don't have a need for right. I'm, excuse me, I'm, no, you know, you're talking, you're wrong on that. I have never asked for right access. But you lie on you, you are, you are, like, you lie on you. No, it is, it is a, no, that is a blatant lawsuit.
You have discussion, Adam E. When you ask her, why did she want to buy now, and she said, because every other supervisor before her had.
I said, read, I could, I could look back at the minutes, every minute, everybody is taken.
You have always said.
And what Billy made, the motion he gave, it read, and right. The motion was.
I did call them out because she told me that since I breached the system.
The question is, if she's doing it, then why is the lawsuit still going on now?
Ten, ten to eight, right, ten to eight.
But why is the lawsuit still going on now? And I would like, uh, uh, that motion, oh, set.
Most supervisors have right access, um, right, I read, direct, on, was on paper. Have your.
And it's in the minutes, it's in the minutes.
Fire it.
We're really needing from the entire board, it's pretty out of the water.
No. We, we going to cast a lawsuit against the county. I understand that the lawsuit.
I understand, you're understanding to.
You don't have standing to tell, still, I mean, I need to.
Providing legal advice regarding the procedure.
Please, please, that don't go on. This is all this argument, I'm tired of you doing that shit. Yes, it is, it's to Alabas, to each and every person sitting at the table, including me. Can we move on, there is a motion, uh, I'm asking the citizens, not the public, so we can. The citizens, but we're in the middle of a vote, the citizens do not have the right to interrupt. That's what he was telling the citizens. Excuse me, we're in the middle. No, he was not, he was talking to the citizens, Kelly, whatever. Excuse me, we're in the middle of a vote. It is. Could you please?
Yes.
Read. Yes.
Who's gonna do that?
Um, trustee, how are we prepared to be?
Uh, this is to approve and disapprove and authorize, here, this is Jim Wright, to approve, full code, it must be due along with the bill. Now, when we talk about, we're gonna be here on, uh, Thursday, as you go home, you can actually write the tickets for everything.
Trust me, I'm saying, I was at that point, wishing he would have taken my decision. But I thought he was just talking about the contract files.
Well, he was, uh, Miss, Miss, you like this to, uh.
Well, he talking about all times. He was talking about getting up here, all the clock already for a person. Done all this, he had the time he was doing, no, it's focused. Because from what Ken is saying, he's already getting paid for some, certain amount of time he's here. What he does for that time, what wants to do, he do. Now, that reminds, for, for all times of just commercial, no, all, going up on commercial. Because he likes to do the whole, and our, um, COVID force, I'm still trying to figure out. He's had, he's been up. But she likes, I don't know for what she likes and not likes to do, but he is. So we're saying, why not let the man who is authorized to do the one? If he has the spare time, ask him to make work of the commercial, go and take that. Because if I'm, that could be taken care of as well. I read, let you all out there for a little bit.
But he should do that in a right, you know, yeah, it, it should be done in rights. And I have no objection to him doing, but I think that he should make those commitments in rights. Yeah, it, it is, I feel.
So, I should, I move that we authorize Bill, of Bill Wright to perform COVID point two duties and your efficiency duties, Jim Wright, and that he can buy that limited right.
Set.
Yes, a discussion.
No, but this.
No, you changed it to discussion.
No, but I should have discussed with, uh, the, the, the association service for, uh, very much. In the course of the, uh, pardon, call, uh, Jim Wright, I'm doing that. We're going to stay.
That's why we're not going to provide this, you know, right? When you say, you say the plan, which there will be no cost, because he said it here. Okay, I'm gonna interject because I was sitting there, and this is not the first time of discussion. If the board wants to be a requirement, let's not go back and forth to the man in here, we got nothing to prove. If the board wants to set aside, talk about the discussion, and we will get back with him and ask him to put it in writing, then this will be one and no first cost to the township. That's nothing to do.
But, 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 in a way, we should make a motion where if he could, put in a right with a motion, we can be effective, that, that, right now.
Why that?
Yeah, for, for.
You can make a motion.
So I made my motion to, I move that you find on COVID force duties and your efficiency duties intended upon the Kitter Consultants providing township with the document and details that there will be no additional cost associated with the services. That, that, upon they can receive that.